Goes on in this world belongs to you and it's through your grace that we enjoy the seasons and all this time. We're thankful, Lord, for the people of this community. We're thankful for the, for the love and for the fellowship that they have one another. And we pray, Lord, that you come into this meeting and help us guide this county to do the best things possible for all of the citizens. Pray, Lord, that you'll protect our soldiers and all those who are abroad protecting our country. Pray for all our leaders, Lord, across the nation, give them the strength to do the right things. And, Lord, we ask that you could give us our sins and thank this and give us a safe journey home when we return. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janine Floyd. Russell Ray.
Here.
Corey Davenport.
Here.
Karen Ashford.
Here.
Jim Bush.
Here.
Greg Mitchell.
Here.
Brandon. Randy Gannon.
Here.
Kim Devonport.
Here.
Ryan Mahoney.
Here. I'd like to make a comment right there. Janine got in touch with me and said she wouldn't be making this meeting because her sister went through another ride on a tree. She had an addiction. So, besides that, I asked her to pray her prayer. Her prayer. The next item on the agenda is a reading of the program of prior meeting minutes. What do you think?
Doctor, one correction. I just got one. It's the one by a former committee on all regulations, the vice chair of all programs for companion animals and animal shelter. We actually voted to take that last week, and she did provide enough data.
We already got the three at mine.
Yeah, it was just from the management's entry. Correct your last motion.
Got a motion to accept a major correction. We're having a board.
Second.
Second by the commission of Randy Gannon, Allen Byrd, Ryan Hope. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, approve of nuggeries. People solicit nuggers here to create their own. Jamie R. Henry, Francis Diana Thany, Corey G. Giddy, Robert L. Gilchrist, Dana Lynn Fair, Mary Shannon Green.
How much more should we approve?
Got a motion to approve numbers. Second by the commission of Randy Gannon, Allen Byrd.
Aye.
All above. I need public comments. Period. Sorry about that. Before we do the public comments period, let's just got one statement I'd like to yield, and that is, public comment period is great, fifteen minutes. And please, I appreciate your cooperation in this, as after fifteen minutes, it's time for the commission to move gears. So, after that fifteen minutes, we can kind of keep it down in the crowd before we can take care of the business. Now, we're beginning to see anybody, but after that fifteen minutes, if you have decided hearing that fifteen minutes, and after that one, then you get some. I pretty say that very much. Thank you so much. Now, we'll enter into the public comment period.
I would like to say something about the sales tax that is going to be proposed. Is that for a referendum vote? How many times has it already been brought up?
Several.
I know, two, three.
Well, I formerly drove a van, funded by county for development through the government, to take people to doctors and to grocery stores and to get their laundry done and all such a stuff. It cost them nothing for older people and most anybody above a certain age. And it was very successful. If a sales tax comes on here, somebody might start another bus line to take those of us who are financially disadvantaged to another place to pay sales tax. Manchester's, then Phil, Murphy's, Farrah, MacIntyre, it's a short distance. But I took people to Nashville. It was appreciated. Sales tax could go out. Drugs, we don't have very much here now. People order from Amazon. They have to pay sales tax one night. Just, you may be old one of these days if you live across. I hope you're able to pay. But think about that. Now, I know the other people are always pleading to you all, but it seems we must.
Next item on the agenda is number eight, approve of votes today.
Are we not having, how often does business tax come in? Do we not have any business tax on our business?
Well, almost all businesses, if your day, if your year ends December thirty first, which most businesses does, their fiscal year, then they have until April fifteenth to pay it. So, most all of our business tax comes in in May and June. So, depending on when you're in, it trickles in through the year if people pay it late or if their fiscal year ends at a different time. But most of our business tax comes in that time of year.
Motion to accept the vote from second.
Russell Ray.
Yes.
Corey Devonport.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Jim Bush.
Yes.
Greg Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Gannon.
Yes.
Kim Devonport.
Yes.
Ryan Mahoney.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is number nine, veteran service office today. I believe I say Mr. Dave Paul here, Mayor of Lincoln, I'll turn it over to you.
As you know, the budget this year included a line item or a series of line items to fund the veteran service office, which American Legion Post Two Seventy-Nine has been operating now for, I think, about three and a half years at this point. And we would like to move out smartly in hiring a new veteran service officer. We have been in contact with VSOs in our surrounding counties. In fact, some of them have reached out to us much earlier, about a year ago, wanting to put their name in the hat in case the VSO office here in Cannon County was started back up again. I had received from Mayor Bush the Tennessee code on hiring a veteran service officer. I believe this was shared with everybody on the commission. In fact, that's the people on the CC line here. It says, "A veteran service officer shall be chosen by the governing body or bodies of the political subdivision or subdivisions creating the veteran service office by which the officer is to be employed. If a veteran service office is created by a contract between two or more political subdivisions, the veteran service officer shall be approved by the governing body of each subdivision participating in the establishment of the office. If the political subdivisions are unable to agree upon a veteran service officer, then the officer shall be chosen by the commissioner of Veterans Affairs or among the candidates proposed by the political subdivisions." The bottom line is, when we brought in the budget, the proposed budget for the VSO to the Budget Committee some months ago, we know that we cannot afford to, in essence, have our own veteran service officer. Okay? So, the plan was to share a veteran service officer either with Warren County, Coffey County, Bledsoe County, or Rutherford County. And after I dug into this, I found out that the, some of these VSOs who have contacted us and we've reached out to are already in, I guess you could say, VSO sharing agreements. In essence, they're working for, like, Bledsoe County two days a week, and they're going to Rutherford County for a pay or two a week, or they're in Coffey County or wherever. Okay? So, there's already some sharing agreements going on, because the counties surrounding us typically only have their VSO open for three days a week, and it's an abbreviated workday, those three days. I guess what I'm asking here is, can, can the Post Two Seventy-Nine, American Legion, interview candidates for the veteran service office for Cannon County and then work with the county executive's office to get a VSO hired? Obviously, we're going to be in some kind of a sharing agreement, so it will have to be a memorandum of understanding agreement drawn up between Cannon County and whatever other county that this VSO is currently working in, so that we de-conflict work hours. So, if we decide to do Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and they're going Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, or we decide to do Monday, Wednesday, whatever occasion may be, that's done. So, that's my first, I guess, question on tape.
I'll look up the lead.
I just want to ask a question. What's the qualifications for that position?
Well, a county veteran service officer must go through accreditation with the state of Tennessee. All the candidates we are speaking to right now are currently active serving veteran service officers, so they have already met those qualifications, because they're already on payroll in other counties. But in essence, the accreditation process is you go to a, about an eight-hour-long class, you take a two-hour examination, and you are then, and then you have to have, in essence, a position with a county veteran service office, and then you're fully accredited. Like, when the Legion's been doing it, we have not been working under the state. We have been working under the offices of the American Legion. You know, the American Legion was established well over a hundred years ago by the Congress of the United States, and the American Legion, the VFW, there are several large organizations able to verify veterans, veterans, that we can, through our system, accredit veteran service officers to, you know, help veterans. But we're not state accredited. Okay? We are, in essence, organizationally accredited, through the federal standards. So, but in essence, what we're getting here by, by having a official county veteran service officer is this individual must go through the state qualification. And when one of the, you know, kind of preconditions we're, we're placing, because we want to get this person hired as soon as possible, like, I mean, we're shooting for one November, is that they are already accredited and they're already working actively in a veteran service office. So, they're current rated.
So, do you think it would be better to go in and get somebody under a sharing agreement? Or do you, evidently that's what you're thinking, rather than trying to find somebody that might be interested in it?
Well, okay. So, let me, let me take this on a step further. For a veteran service officer, a county veteran service officer, to maintain their accreditation, they must work a minimum of one thousand hours a year. Our current funding and our budget line for payroll will not fund a thousand hours a year. So, a lot of small counties in the state of Tennessee enter into these sharing agreements so they can meet that qualification standard of a thousand hours a year. They don't have to do the thousand hours in this county. If there are, you know, in essence, officially a veteran service officer for some other county, we can split that time. But they have to keep track of their work hours and submit that to the state on an annual basis to get, in essence, re-accredited with the next year.
So, what you're saying, in your budget, you do have the money to cover this part of that?
Right. Right. And that's, and we made a conscious decision when we, when we submitted, you know, the budget to the Budget Committee, that we weren't going to try to fund an office with a full-time veteran service officer, because, I mean, we've learned a lot of the last eight years about the number of veterans that come through there, the number of cases. I don't think we can, from a cost-benefit analysis, analysis, justify a full-time VSO in Cannon County. Any other questions on this piece?
I trust you know what you want, what you want. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve the working of candidates that, that first time.
Got a motion to, let's bump one in the end to get the first time. It's up. That's second.
Second.
Second for Randy Gannon. Any discussion?
Russell Ray.
Yes.
Corey Devonport.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Jim Bush.
Yes.
Greg Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Gannon.
Yes.
Kim Devonport.
Yes.
Ryan Mahoney.
If you would entertain me for just a few minutes more, I've got a couple of items I'd like to quickly address. One of them is directly related to the VSO budget. I would venture to say that all of you are aware that the bridge up here that goes up the Auburn Town Road, that, you know, at the top of the bridge nowhere, as some people call it, the million-dollar bridge, was dedicated back in two thousand and nine to First Lieutenant Frank B. Walkup the Fourth, and it is a dedicated memorial bridge. It came to our attention back in the May-June timeframe that that bridge had been covered with graffiti, like, rather nasty graffiti. We worked with the T-Dot and the state to get an initial paint job done to cover that graffiti, but we also have submitted a proposal to T-Dot for the American Legion to, in essence, do a, a more decorative paint job on that bridge. We would like to, in essence, cover it, to paint it red, white, and blue, so it stands out. And of course, the, the darker paints would be a lot harder for somebody to come in and put graffiti on. And I think that when the bridge stood out and had a nice plaque put on it, and Lieutenant Walkup's name stenciled on the side of the bridge, that there would be a pride factor in the community that would prevent, you know, future vandalism of the bridge. We have currently been in contact with Mrs. Shaw in Bible T-Dot. We have sent drawings of exactly what we were going to do, or our proposal is, and we're awaiting that approval. We've had to actually bring in Senator Podium to this and try to cut through some of the bureaucratic red tape. But the, the, the cost of doing this is going to be about four thousand dollars. And the Legion does not have four thousand dollars put into this effort. So, what we're asking is that the commission amend the budget, because we're already well into the year of the veteran service office, and take four thousand dollars out of that office and put it towards the bridge, painting that.
If you do that, are you going to have enough money around the year?
Yes. There's, there's twelve thousand five hundred dollars in the, in the budget lines for the veteran service office for this year. And, I mean, we're already through, what, July, August, September, October, we're already four months into the year. So, third of the year's already passed.
Would that be contingent upon approval by T-Dot?
Yes, it'd be contingent upon T-Dot, if I had given a final approval to do the work. I, I can tell you right now, weather-wise, we probably, we had tried to push since June to do this, actually, last Saturday. And then we had shifted to this Saturday, and we still don't have the approvals, and we're probably now at a point where it won't get done this fall, and it'll be kicked in in spring before we actually get this done.
David, if you don't mind, when you get written through from them, then would you mind coming back to us?
And then we'll discuss.
Let me, let me give them what they do to have a, a new action motion. That's the kind.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to have it right.
All right. The, the final thing, I, I'm sure you're aware that the year twenty twenty is the decennial census. And county executive's office contacted us, or me, back in about three months ago, to see if the Legion will be willing to work the census for Cannon County. Let me hand out. Somebody can't keep back and take one of these and hand them another. So, we have already gone through, in essence, inside of the American Legion, we have an executive committee that takes care of, you know, all of the operations proposed on behalf of the membership, and we have, in essence, converted that, sent that executive committee into the Cannon County Complete County Committee. We have gone through the train with the Census Bureau, Federal Census Bureau, and we have, you'll see, we have a campaign plan here that kind of lays out the, our plan of how to address the requirements of being a complete county committee now. Obviously, the importance of everybody responding to the census is that federal dollars are tied to the population in the county. So, the federal dollars that come into Cannon County typically passes through local government, either in terms of the county government or the school system, is dictated by the head count in the census. So, the, the purpose of a complete county committee at the local level is to educate the local population on the requirements of the census, the benefits of responding to the census, educating them in fact that if they respond to the census, their information is not going to be shared with Department of Justice, Department of Homeland Security, or the Department of this, that, the other. It's completely separate. It's secure. If you haven't been visited yet, you probably will be pretty soon, there are census workers right now that are going out to try to figure out exactly all the addresses in the county to where they will be sending the, the census forms. Those forms will go out in March, and then April is when, you'll, actually, the twentieth of March is when the website opens up and you can refund online. Bottom line is that I, I thought it'd be, you know, that it would be good to come in and break the commission and show you that, one, give you that educational folder that talks about, you know, what you need to know about the census. And so, you've got, you've got this, and to show you that we have already developed a, a full-scale plan where we are going to, in essence, leverage multiple messaging systems through the local paper, through the local radio, through the school system, in essence, to educate children. We're developing a class right now we're going to give to the children in all the school systems, so they understand the importance of the census. We're working with DTC, Middle Tennessee Electric, Gas Company, Water, you know, all utilities to put messaging, the bills. We're also going to get, we've already got a poster plan, we're going out in the community and putting posters up all over in the community, you know, in storefronts and places like that, educating the census, and we're going to mail out, educational drive. And then we, we've also identified, you know, key, in essence, people groups inside the county that, you know, may not get the word, and we've come up with a plan now to engage them. And obviously, we're also going to engage, like, the Senior Citizen Center to educate our seniors in the county, work with Lions Club and the other civic organizations. But I just wanted to use this time for, you know, a couple of minutes to say, we're, we're on the top of the Census Twenty Twenty plan, and in fact, the, our plan, our action plan, the, the Census Bureau guy who's in charge, his name is Jacob Howell, he's looked at our plan, and that's, and that has become the standard that all other counties in the state should try anyway. So, he's actually taken that out and redacted some of the local information off of it and sharing that with the others during the training that he's been, so I just thought I would, we'll take a moment to let you know that Census Twenty Twenty is, is being worked. Are there any questions on, on the census? If there's no questions, that completes. Thank you so much.
Number ten, on the agenda, industrial development board, new members of conservation done, the whip is the chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be brief. My statute required to bring new members for your final approval. Mr. Luna had to step away, as you know, this is the new chairman of BCA, and for, he's got a family and several busy folks. So, our new member is Mr. Tim Cantrell. Can I ask you any questions about him?
Just, which is that expert, James?
Uh, he is a career employee with DTC, and in the modern day of business, high-speed internet is a sin. So, we were also going to touch on this.
Can you tell me if they need qualifications?
Yes, uh.
Qualified voter and taxpayer?
Uh, the Cannon County IDB's lawyer review, all members in all of the county.
Do you, are you a qualified voter taxpayer, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
You own property here in Cannon County?
Yes, ma'am.
You have a vacant registered in, um, registered office?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't see it, so I was just wondering.
Oh, well, it's there.
You're a registered voter in Cannon County?
Mr. Teplak, you talked about that. Yeah, he registered.
Okay. And you do own property in Cannon County?
Second. Second. And?
Russell Ray.
Yes.
Corey Devonport.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Jim Bush.
Yes.
Greg Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Gannon.
Yes.
Kim Devonport.
Yes.
Ryan Mahoney.
Yes.
Number eleven on the agenda, private agent, two thousand thirteen, Captain Twenty-Three Six, the end, bang with commerce, flag, handle.
Can I, like, suggest a minute? We got eight members up to water seven in the past, if you have two people, well, yes, they just did.
But you don't go ahead and take action as they have done the other way. You have to be voting twice if you're going to see someone there. So, to, you know.
College question.
Well, I think folks have sort of got to find it to make that one for you. I, I just think it'll be out there. The only reason why I didn't put it over there is due to the conversation I have with those.